Good evening. Welcome to the special meeting to conduct interviews of prospective candidates and to elect a new school board member. This evening, the special meeting is to interview and elect a new school board member and to transact any other business that comes before the board. This meeting shall come to order. It was a closed session on December 21st, 2021, from 5:30 until 6:11 PM for personnel, litigation, and real estate matters, and this evening from 5:30 PM until 6:30 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. We'll call Mr. Rogers.
Dr. Hague.
President.
Mr. Des Noiers.
President.
Mr. War Savage.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Mitchell.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda?
Moved.
Second.
The agenda has been moved and seconded. Are there any amendments to offer?
Other than that?
Okay, thank you. The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carried. At this time, we'd like to welcome Mr. Craig Fagioli. I want to make sure I'm pronouncing your name right. Is that correct? I did a good job. Thank you. And Ms. Desiree Lamar Murphy. I want to welcome you both. The resignation for a school board director, Mrs. Gina Curry, was accepted and became effective on December 20th, 2021. As per Policy 004, Bob One filing, filling a vacancy, the board has 30 days to fill the vacancy, which expires on January 19, 2022. The advertisement of the vacancy was placed in the Delaware County Daily Times and ran for three days, December 11th, 12th, and 13th of 2021. The deadline for submission for applications was noon on January 6th, 2022. The applicant selected for the position will be fulfilling the unexpired term for Mrs. Curry until the first Monday in December of 2023. The time commitment includes monthly board meetings, generally falling on the second Tuesday of each month, and monthly committee meetings, generally falling on the fourth Tuesday of each month, for the following: Education and Pupil Services Committee, Finance and Operations Committee, and there are liaison assignments, and there's School Board Professional Development, and there's other assignments, other duties as assigned. I'll add. The applicants will be interviewed individually in the order in which the district received their application. As only one applicant may be in the room at a time during the interviews, the administration will provide seating in the hall for the other applicants to quietly await their turn. Each interview will begin with an opportunity for the applicant to make an opening statement that is up to three minutes long. During each of the interviews, each board member will ask one question of the applicant's. After the above questions, there will be a period for board members to ask clarifying or follow-up questions related solely to an applicant's previous responses. Members of the public may observe but may not take part or interject at any point during the interviews. Public comment will take place prior to the vote. The board's process is not intended to include applicants questioning or debating each other, and no opportunity for such will be given. So based on the order in which the applications were received, I think we're going to start with Mr. Craig Fagioli. So Ms. Desiree Lamar Murphy is going to exit the room.
Good evening, school board members. Thank you for taking this time to interview me and looking over my application. My name is Craig Fagioli. I have lived in Drexel Hill with my wife for, since 2009, for 12 years. We have our son Benjamin. I think what I want to say is I really want to get involved in our community. When I saw that this position was vacant, I spoke with my wife about it. We discussed it, and we both agreed that we thought that this would be a good opportunity for me to get involved. I'm very excited to participate in this. I am a little nervous with this interview.
As you should.
But yeah, I'm ready to field any questions you guys have for me, and I hope I can give you all the best answers I can.
Okay. So I'm going to thank you in advance for even seeking the position. This is a labor of love for all of us. We take it, we all take it seriously. We enjoy it. We consider it a big responsibility, and thank you for even seeking this role. So thank you for that. The first question belongs to Director Des Noiers, who's sitting the closest to you.
Thank you, President Brown. So my question is, please give us a brief description of your background.
Thank you. I grew up in Clifton Heights. I attended St. Charles Barmell Grade School. Went to Mont senior Bonner High School. Then I attended Newman University, where I studied English literature with a certification in education. I am two credits shy. I did my student teaching, and I realized it took a special person to be a teacher. I didn't think I had it. But it was also, I knew it wasn't for me. I knew I wanted to learn a trade. I wish I had some direction earlier on in my life. So if I went to college, I would have taken something more under construction management and things like that. So when I did my student teaching, got out, I realized I wasn't ready for that. That summer, after that semester, I applied to Steamfitters Local Unit 420, passed the test, passed the interview, and did my five-year apprenticeship program, and haven't looked back. I enjoyed every moment of it. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much for your response, and I don't know if others feel the same way, but you know, if you're, if you've had enough working in the field and want to get those two extra credits, we might want to talk to you. Thank you for your response.
Very subtle, Neil. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. And I certainly didn't plan this, but randomly, Doctor, Director Dr. Hague has the next question, number two.
Thank you, President Brown. Mr. Fagioli, can you tell us why do you want to join the school board?
First and foremost, like I said, I wanted to be involved. The other part was, because of that two-credit shy in education, when school board was vacant, I realized I could use what I've learned in college and hopefully can apply to the school board. If I wanted to get involved in anything, it would be in education in this community. I think Upper Darby has a great school district. I would love to be a part of it, especially with my son that will be going through the same school system. So that's why I wanted to be involved in Upper Darby School Board.
Thank you. And the next question is mine, going in order randomly. And I think you kind of answered this. How long have you been a resident? And you said 12 years you've been in Drexel Hill. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So we'll move right along to question four, which will be Director Williams.
Good evening. How do you view your role as a board member?
Another role of the board members to help with, looking over curriculums, setting books, text books, picking out the right books for each school districts, or each school. The way I look at it, for me, is I'd like to be a representative on the board for students who would like to learn trades, encourage students to learn trades more. I would love to bring more diversity into trades as well, especially with women, getting more women encouraged to work in trades. I think that's how my involvement of the school board would like to be, if I could be a voice on the board for students that were like me. I was pushed on college, and I was told if you wanted to get ahead in this world, you had to go to college. But nobody ever said anything to me about, if you learn a trade, and if you're good at it, and you take it seriously, like almost all tradesmen do, you can make a, really, you can have a nice career and make a good life for yourself. And I think that's where I'd like to stand on school board.
Thank you.
Okay. Question five will be Director Vice President Fields.
Just tell us, to the best of your ability, how familiar you are with how our school district operates?
To the best of my ability. Growing up in a Cactus school, and attending Cactus school, I have not much knowledge about how the school board, or how the school district operates, which is something I want to learn because it's something that I know my son is going to be going through, and I want to be there for him. I know we are a public school district. I know we have, we listen to what parents want, what the parents need, what they think is best for their kids. And I know the school board looks out for the best of the kids. I know the school district has 13,000 students, and I know this school district does well to provide for every one of those students, and I know it comes down to the school board to help to provide all of that. To the best of my ability, that's what I know of our school district, and there's more that I'd like to learn.
Okay. Thank you very much. Question six will be Director Mitchell.
What has been your personal involvement with education in our community?
Mostly athletic. I've coached several hockey teams, and not in the Upper Darby community, but, well, at Bonner, I coached ice hockey. I coached ice hockey at Lower Marion, and I coached ice hockey for the Haverford Hawks for a few years. Education-wise, in the past, I've tutored students, especially through college, many students, I should say. And in the past, I have also participated in school functions in our area to help promote, again, trades, things like that, and gone career days, again, to help promote trades.
Thank you for your involvement.
Thank you very much. Question seven will be Director War Savage.
My question for you, Mr. Fagioli, is what special attributes, talents, and abilities will you bring to the district?
I see myself as a leader on, on job sites. Quite often, I am asked to do some difficult tasks. Currently, right now, I am a foreman on another job. And working on construction sites, I do well to communicate with other trades, coordinating, equipment, materials, things like that, staging areas to work in. Talking with the other trades so that we're not working on top of each other, but we're still working together to get a project accomplished and done. I feel like I could bring that. I feel as a strong strength of mine is communication and leadership, and making sure that the job gets done well, everyone has their part, everyone's working together, and no one's really getting in the way of anybody else so that the job can get done.
Thank you very much. And question, the next question will be for Director Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. I see you save the best for last. I appreciate that. So I am a teacher, and education's very dear to me. What do you feel is the number-one challenge facing our schools today?
That's a loaded question. There's, there's so many different challenges, especially trying to keep up with technology. So many things are changing in this world so quickly and fastly. It's, it's, you're trying to keep up with that and educate our kids. I think a challenge today especially is, you know, we have to educate our children how to pick, pick what news they actually are listening to. I feel like, especially for me, from personal experiences, you just, if some people just watch one news network, you're only going to get one view, one side, or you're not going to get the whole entire story. I think that's a challenge that we need to address to children today, is how to do your own research, how to look things up, and how to listen to what's being said. I do, again, I do think technology, and I also think we need a stronger, we need to bring back a stronger, I don't know how to say this, but a stronger workforce to prepare kids that you don't have to go straight to college to get ahead. Again, it's my personal experience that I'm bringing up here, but it's, learning a trade is a great thing, especially in this country. You learn how to work with your hands, you can get ahead in this world and make a good career and a good life for yourself and your family. I find myself, I, I appreciate what I have, especially in the union, that my wife is able to stay at home like she wants to, to raise our son, and I'm able to provide for that, where some families have to have both parents out working. But if we can educate our kids in learning how to build things again, teach our kids new technologies, I feel like that is a challenge to do because there's, there's a lot out there, and it's always changing. But yeah, and I hope to help with that.
Okay. So we, we allowed you to make an opening statement. I'm just going to improvise and just add to the script. You can, if you want to make a closing statement, we finished all the questions, so if you want to make a brief closing statement, please feel free to do so.
I just want to say thank you again. This wasn't as daunting as I thought it was going to be. No, but thank you again. Thank you for taking out the time for listening to me. I hope I answered all your questions well, and I look forward to hopefully working with you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fagioli. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Ms. Desiree Lamar Murphy, would, how do I make sure I refer to you properly? Is it Ms. Lamar Murphy, or is it Ms. Murphy? How do you, what do you prefer?
Either is fine. Lamar Murphy or Murphy is fine.
Okay. All right. So we are going to begin, but we're going to introduce our, I think we did that already. I think we're going to start with an opening statement for you. If you could give a three-minute opening statement before we begin with the questions, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Desiree Lamar Murphy, and I'm a nine-year resident of Upper Darby. I have five daughters, four of which who attend Upper Darby School District Schools, three graduated, one is a senior who will be graduating this year. And attend, it's, two of them attended, three of them attended colleges and universities. I reside on Sellers. I am the founder and CEO of Murphy's Giving Market, a community resource center located on West Chester Pike, will not only just serve food to people who are food insecure, but we also offer other resources to help up, help lift families out of the, out of poverty. We have GED classes, ESL classes, we offer COVID information boosters, COVID clinics, health clinics, toy drives, and we provided food, break bags for students during breaks so that they don't miss breakfast and lunch that are not provided during spring breaks, Christmas breaks, and the like. I am a proud graduate of Philadelphia Public Schools. I attended Overbrook High School, and I went to, I went to.
Me too.
Thank you. I went to Community College of Philadelphia, Temple University, Cabrini College, and then Holy Family University. I hold associates in early childhood education, bachelors in elementary education with a concentration in special education. I have a master's in education, and also a master's in education administration. I really appreciate the opportunity to work in Upper Darby as a community member and a community servant. It affords me the opportunity to be able to work with the community, hear from the community, and give back to the community. I have a two-year-old grandson, Christopher, who I love and who I am looking forward to attending Upper Darby Public Schools, too.
Okay. Thank you for that brief opening statement. That was great. Good job. Thank you. We'll start with our questions, and the first question belongs to Director Des Noiers.
Thank you, President Brown. So my question is, and you've already touched on some of this, but please give us a brief description of your background, so maybe a little more information about some of the different points you raised.
So education was a second career for me. I went back to school because when my oldest daughter was, who is here in the room, she attended private school for kindergarten, but my second daughter, and the rest of the daughters, attended public school. And I saw the disparities between the private school and public school. And when I began to ask questions, I didn't get answers that I was satisfied with. So rather than being that cantankerous parent who complained, I've decided to go back to school to actually learn about education and to be the change maker, and that is where I am today. So I started out as an emotional support teacher. So anybody that knows about education in the room, that is like the toughest of the tough, but that was my most enjoyable experience, because if you can teach emotional support teacher, kids, students, and if you can connect with them, then you can, you're a special person, so they say. And I've also taught from three years old all the way up to high school, Germantown High School, the year before they closed. That was my last, that was my high school experience. I've taught every facet of special needs, special education, with the exception of multiple disability support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think the next question is Director Dr. Hague.
Thank you, President Brown. Ms. Lamar Murphy, can you tell us why do you want to join the school board?
So I want to join the school board, number one, because during the pandemic, a lot of parents came to us through Murphy's Market, asking many questions related to COVID and how their students would be impacted. And I even had parents that would bring their IEPs to me and want to know how the school could possibly support their children through the pandemic, especially autistic support students. And although I was not working for Upper Darby School District, I explained to them how schools work. But then, about a year ago, I joined an initiative called Upper Darby Rising. And through that, I really gained an understanding, more understanding about the community, and then I gained a passion for wanting to really work with the school board, but I just didn't know how or what there was space. And then recently, there was a vacancy, and I said, this could be the way that I could work, because I do have such a vast background with the community. They do have a lot of trust in me because I work with Murphy's Market, and also I come with an experience in education and a connection to teachers because I am a teacher.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. The next question is mine, and I think you answered it, but it's how long have you been a resident? You said nine years. Is that correct?
Nine years this week.
All right. All right. Happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Question four belongs to Director Williams.
So it's nice to meet you. How do you view your role as a board member?
So as a special ed person, you learn how to work as a team. As a special ed liaison is which, which I was, as a person that organizes a team. I see myself as a team member, but also as a problem solver. I know that as a board member, you're, as a special, as a, as a school board, you have lots of problems or challenges to solve, and it's, it's very similar to when you sit down and try to write an IEP for a child. Here, you have tests, different test scores, you have a parent who wants different things for their child. This is the same thing with the school board. You have a community that wants things for their children, and you want to be able to meet those needs of those children, and also you have to work as, together as a team. So I feel like, for me, my biggest asset is that I can, I like to solve problems, which is why I started Murphy's Market. I saw a problem, I found a need. And that's not just this feeling that need, but finding ways to fulfill continual needs.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. The next question belongs to Director Vice President Fields.
Hi, Desiree.
Hi.
To the best of your, of your ability, tell us how familiar, how familiar you are with how our school district operates. Pardon me.
So this, there is a school board. The school board hires the superintendent. Underneath the superintendent, there are assistant superintendents who have different responsibilities or roles. And then there are directors who also have different responsibilities to keep the school district running and safe for students. And then there's principals. It's a hierarchy.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. I think the next question belongs to Director Mitchell.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello.
What, and you've really touched on this a lot, so if you just want to expand on, upon it, what has been your personal involvement with education in our community?
So as you know, I'm also on the DCIU Policy Council for pre-K and head start, because that's, I work in Philadelphia pre-K head start program also, and I've been doing that for about, almost about a year now. I also am a parent. I think I was pretty much involved parent, especially when the children were younger. We get, we, I've tried to work a lot with the social workers in Murphy's Market to make sure that we are connecting to the needs of the students and the communities, and this, especially in the lower, more at-risk schools. So I do a lot of work with the social workers around food insecurities, around clothing, hats, stuff like, projects like that. And I think that's, that's basically what I do, what I try to do. A lot of work around community service with the social workers, but also DCIU Policy Council, and making sure that parents know what services are out there for their children.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I think the next question belongs to Director War Savage.
Thank you, President Brown. Ms. Lamar Murphy, my question for you is, and you've basically summarized this throughout the conversation this evening, what special attributes, talents, and abilities will you bring to the district? If you could just summarize it.
I think that, over the time that I've been here, although that I've been quiet, I have built a trust with the community, that they believe what I say. They have, Murphy's Market has been a platform for the community to be able to get resources from, but also for us to build relationships with the community. So when they come to talk to us about certain issues, especially education-related, and it is a lot of education-related questions that the community does have, I feel like I am, can be the liaison between the district or the board, and also the families that have questions that don't know how to come to the board. I had a very interesting conversation with some young men a few weeks ago. They came to wrap toys, and they were actually of another faith, but they were helping, helping us wrap toys for families in the community who, for our toy drive. And the question was, why don't we celebrate the Eid in Upper Darby? And I said, well, that's a good question. They said, well, how can we get that done? And I gave them the process on how to do that. So I think that's a talent or attribute that I can provide, because people can come to the center and ask questions that they may not know how to come to the district to ask, or how to come to the school board to ask.
Okay. And the next question belongs to Director Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. As an educator myself, my whole life is around education. I live and breathe it. So what do you think, how do you feel is the, or I'm sorry, what do you feel is the number-one challenge facing our schools today?
COVID-19 and 20 and whatever else, Omicron. I think that COVID has put a big light on education, a big spotlight on education. What I will say is that, and I know there's probably Philadelphia people listening, I think Upper Darby has done, has done an awesome job with the virtual instruction for students, because I know another district has a whole separate virtual academy for children who wanted to go virtual. So they're not with their peers, they're with a whole different teacher, different peers from a different side of the city. So that, that's another trauma for children, because they're not with the people they would normally see on a regular basis. Where Upper Darby has done a great job, which I know personally, because my daughter could not return because of health issues initially, but yet she's still sitting in a classroom with her peers and her teacher and receiving the same instruction. COVID-19 has created lots of challenges for schools and for teachers and for families. And I think there's no right or wrong answer to how we solve the problem, but I think that, that as long as we work together as a community to hear what the community and the parents' concerns are, and to also be, listen, listen to them and try to work it out and try to find a middle ground, so that children are safe. And that is, that is the forefront of everything that we do, is making sure that children are safe and they're educated, and that we put children first. You're welcome.
Okay. One of the things that we'll allow you to do, you made an opening statement, so we've completed all the interview questions, so if you could make, if you would like to make a closing statement, that would be greatly appreciated.
Just wanted to thank you all for giving me this opportunity, as nervous as I am. I know I've I know I've done a lot of speaking, but nothing like this. But just thank you for giving me the opportunity to submit the application and to be heard tonight. And whatever decision you make, I appreciate just, just being heard and looking forward to more, with working with you in the future.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our first order of business for this portion of the meeting is the nomination and election of a new board member. I will entertain nominations.
President Brown.
Sorry, President Brown, I nominate Desiree Lamar Murphy.
Second.
All right, I heard a, I got a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations?
President Brown, I'd like to nominate Craig Fagioli.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay, hearing none. I'm sorry. The nomination fails. Okay, thanks. All right. Before, before we, Mr. Rogers takes a poll vote on the nominations, are there any questions or comments from the board? Do we have, okay, you're right, we didn't close the nomination. But I don't think we have to close, do we have to?
Motion to close the nomination.
Second.
All the, okay. All those in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Any opposed? Please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. The nominations are closed. Before Mr. Rogers takes a poll vote on the nomination, are there any questions or comments from the board?
I just wanted to thank both applicants for putting yourself out there and wanting to serve in this capacity on the school board. Obviously, we can only choose one. But it is, you know, every two years, there's a new school board election. So I encourage you to stay involved.
It's tough to come in and interview for this, having done it myself, especially when there's other people also applying for the position. So that, that is a lot, and I appreciate both of you coming in and doing that. We definitely need more engagement in this community. And for one of you, this path is, is not going to be an option, but definitely find another path for that kind of engagement. We need a lot more people involved and working towards the success of this, of the school district and this township. So thank you for that.
I want to thank Craig Fagioli for coming out and interviewing. I believe your background in the trades is something that this district needs. So I would appreciate your continued involvement. And like Director Mitchell said, we have elections every two years. And as, as what happened with Ms. Curry, you know, she moved on to a state rep. And so there's other positions, or someone may retire from the board. But please stay involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Neil. Any other, any other comments? So I'll just add my own. As I stated during both interviews, I was in your shoes before. I was determined to gain a seat in this capacity. And then, you know, my time did come. But before that, I was heavily involved in the district. So the learning curve for me was probably a little bit shorter because I stayed connected and engaged to the district. So I encourage you to do that, okay? So it's not a one time and you can never try again. So thank you for that. Thank you for, I learned a lot about you and I look forward to knowing you better even moving forward, okay? Any other comments from the board? Hearing none? Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none and seeing none? Let's be fair, are there any comments? Want to make sure.
There are no comments.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rogers.
Mr. Brown.
Oh, yes.
May I suggest that since there is only one nomination, that the board move for the election by acclamation?
All those in favor.
Everybody within say aye.
Okay, great, thank you. All those in favor of Ms. Desiree Lamar Murphy?
I move for the verbiage that allows us to do that. Yeah. Yes, please.
Is there a second for? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote by a nomination, aye, okay. The motion carries. Now, Kyle, it's okay, right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record.
David Neil.
Okay. Any, anyone abstaining, please say aye abstaining and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Welcome to the board, Ms. Desiree Lamar Murphy. The next order of business is to administer the oath of office to Ms. Desiree Lamar Murphy. She has been elected to fill the vacant school board position of the Upper Darby School Board to serve a term which ends on the first Monday of December 2023. Will Ms. Desiree Lamar Murphy please come forward? I solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge, discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, welcome to the board. Welcome to the combined work session and regular in-person and virtual meeting for January 11, 2022. The first item on the work session agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance in salute to the flag by the kindergarten center students, Angelica Protika, Anna Ford, Levi Cuffy, and Sanaiah Emba-Rock.
I pledge to the flag of a nice, safe America. To the private, rigid stands, one nation, under God, and freedom, liberty, and justice for all.
Now, whenever I hear the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm gonna think about that rendition of it, that version. Yes. They did their part. Now it's time to move on to bigger and better things. The second item on the work session agenda is a presentation to the, on the kindergarten center's 25th anniversary by Ms. Deana Williams.
Good evening, Board President Brown, Vice President Fields, board members. Newly elected board members, welcome and congratulations. Also Superintendent McGary, as well as staff members that are here, families, community members. I'm Deana Williams, and I'm the super fortunate and proud principal of the Upper Darby Kindergarten Center. I am going on my sixth year, which seems crazy to me that it's been that long already. But tonight, we are presenting to you our 25th anniversary. So this, this year is the 25th anniversary of the Upper Darby Kindergarten Center. This was a unique project that took on by Principal Dave Sanderson at the time. And we did, we were able to get some of the original teachers, four of whom still teach at the Upper Darby Kindergarten Center. Four who retired just in the last year or so were able to come back as well. And so we would like to present that video to you now. Jason Taylor did an amazing job. So Jay, you may go red hat.
The whole concept of the kindergarten center was very exciting. We needed it because we were overcrowded.
I was at Highland Park, and because of overcrowding, we moved over to Hillcrest. So we needed a home. So it was a great idea to bring all the little kids together in one place.
There was a lot of planning that went into the beginning. We gathered together on numerous occasions, talked about the concept of the kindergarten center. We went and visited a few centers around the state of Pennsylvania. And the end result has been just a phenomenal school.
We were very excited about the whole concept of being a K center where the whole entire building was geared to five-year-olds.
Everything was on the level of a five and six-year-old child. The whole school was painted with murals to brighten up the building. And it just seemed like, you know, we were one big happy family.
In the beginning, it was a little rough, just for the fact that every kid was a bus kid.
We were bringing kindergarten children, over 600, throughout the course of the day because we had AM and PM.
But we always came together, shared our thoughts and our ideas. We picked each other's brains and tried to come up with the best way. We just, we're constantly trying to improve and come up with better ways to make things work smoothly.
And we worked all that out, and we never lost anybody, to my knowledge.
What was really interesting was bringing teachers from five different schools into one school.
When the district opened up this center, I think that we were all coming from all different feeder schools. And we had known each other through committees, but we didn't all really know each other.
Many people had different habits that they were in. And Dave Sanderson, the principal, did a wonderful job blending everybody together.
Everybody shared, everybody worked together. We fed off each other. We had ideas and we bounced them around.
We were able to rewrite the curriculum and put everybody on the same page.
Everybody, the special teachers and the classroom teachers, worked together. So if the kids were working on, say, the letter L in phys ed class and library and the other specials, they would also be working on the letter L.
It was just such a wonderful place to be, that everybody here was doing all of the same things.
Right away, we got in and we figured it out. And we found exactly what we need to do with the kids and what makes them happy.
We had the building blocks built for the kids so that when they went on to first grade, they were able to continue, you know, developing their literacy skills, the reading, the writing, the listening.
When the kids learn something new, or they make a connection, and they finally realize that they're actually learning, especially how to read, it is incredible to see their smiling face.
We all worked together to prove to the people that were skeptical about this whole kindergarten center concept, how dedicated we were to making this first year of school experience for the children of Upper Darby, such a special year.
I have nothing but good memories of teaching here during that time. This was a joyous place.
Just the excitement of all the students coming in every day and starting their day with song was amazing.
We did a lot of Dama days, and we cooked different foods on Fridays, and did a whole lot of things with our letters of the week. So it was really hands-on and a lot of fun for the kids.
I really did love when we were able to take kids on field trips. We rode the ferry across to the aquarium, and that was the highlight of some of their lives. And that was so much fun to be a part of that. And our end of the year show, we would all have tears in our eyes and goosebumps watching our students perform for their families. That was always a nice, nice day.
The hard part was only seeing the kids for one year.
I miss watching the kids grow up. I miss watching the kids go through the years.
I want to find out, you know, when they go to elementary school and middle school. But luckily, some of them come, and that makes me feel really good.
We've had students come back as late as high school even to visit.
I do still see parents that recognize me and, and students that do reach out and say, oh yeah, I remember you from the kindergarten center.
Now, in the age of social media, it's interesting. A lot of former students, and I have quite a few from that first year, that find me on Facebook and will add me.
I really believe that they will never forget kindergarten because it was here at the kindergarten center.
Even they have like, I guess, high school now or going to college, and they will come back and say, the best year we spent here.
That year was, we were just facing the few of the little daily challenges and working out the little bumps to make the, the year go so smoothly. But when I look at those names, I can picture every single one of their little faces still. Now that I see some of them and they're grown and on their own and doing great things, it's just, it's a great feeling to know that I was part of that. You know, we were all part of seeing these little children grow up to be such successful young adults.
One of the other things about the kindergarten center that's been really special after being here for so long is not only the relationships that we've had with the kids over the years, but also with each other.
The kindergarten center has always been very fortunate having the faculty and staff that they have.
It's truly a calling to be able to and want to work with five-year-olds because they can be quite challenging. You have a unique group of teachers here that understand how five and six-year-olds need to learn. And that is what causes an incredible experience for these children. These people were all committed to making the kids that came here every day love to learn.
We are referred to as a faculty, but I consider these people my family.
We are family here. We become very close and we know what to do for the kids. And we're very happy with the way the program runs.
Happy 25th anniversary. It's 25 years, oh my goodness.
I can't believe it's been 25 years. I feel like it was yesterday that we were all here together.
Twenty-five, hopefully you will have more and more to come.
Happy 25th anniversary, K Center.
Happy?
Twenty-five.
Years.
Kindergarten Center. And I wish you many more years of success and happiness and fun.
I would just like to say thank you to Jason Taylor. It was an incredible, incredible job on the, on the video. I also want to recognize in the audience tonight is Ms. Dottie Toomey. And Dottie Toomey's been at the kindergarten center since the first year of its opening. She is a classroom teacher, so Mrs. Toomey, please stand up. So Mrs. Toomey leads our building in song twice a day, every day, rain or shine. She's amazing and goes above and beyond for her students, for our entire school building. And I just want to thank Dottie, every day, for doing what you do. Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, for all your hard work. Kindergarten Center is amazing. I say that from experience, my three children went to the kindergarten center. And yeah, it provided a strong foundation. So thank you for all your hard work, and thank you, Dottie. Thank you. The final item on the work session agenda is the school board recognition by Superintendent Dr. Daniel McGary.
We're proud of you, President Brown. It's okay, I'm gonna do that during, during my report, if that's okay with you.
Sure, absolutely. Before we call tonight's meeting to order, Dr. McGary, will you please outline the public's participation procedures, please, sir?
Yes, we're President Brown. Tonight is a, is a board meeting, a board action meeting, which is different than our committee meetings. Tonight, we allow for public comment. So members of the public that are here with us tonight, when a report is reviewed before the board takes action, there'll be an opportunity for you to step up to the microphone, make a comment on that report. You'll have a three-minute time period. Please provide your name and your address. There's also, prior to the start of this evening at 7:30, a list for speakers who can give general comments. You are to sign in prior to 7:30 to be a general speaker this evening. So again, if you do want to speak during a report, you come to the microphone, provide your name and your address and the specific report you're commenting on. The board will take that into consideration before moving forward. You can also, if you're virtual this evening, the board is live streaming the meetings. We've started that process during COVID-19, and we decided to keep that in place for the foreseeable future. We will allow members of the public who are not with us in person to send in comments to boardmeetingcomments@upperdarbysd.org. Please provide your name and your address and the specific report you'd be commenting on. If you wanted your comments to come into the general comments section, they had to come in prior to 7:30. Also, members of the public that are not with us in person can phone in a comment to 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Same process, provide your name, your address, and the specific report you'd like to comment on this evening, and the board will take that into consideration. As we've updated our board procedures and policies for in-person and virtual meetings, the board also has made it known that those who are in attendance will speak first. And then, after all in-person comments are heard, we'll then move to virtual comments and then go from there. We're President Brown, if there needs to be an update this evening, I'm certainly happy to provide one.
Thank you, and feel, feel free to revisit that at your discretion throughout the evening. The regular in-person and virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District, board of school directors will please come to order. With the addition of our newly appointed board member, Mrs. Lamar Murphy, all board members previously polled are still present. The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve the previously posted agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved and seconded. Are there any amendments to offer?
No, we're President Brown.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The minutes of the combined work session and regular meeting and the reorganization meeting of December 7, 2021 are in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The reporter, the secretary, please. Director Williams.
The reporter, the secretary, is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The reporter, the treasurer, please. Mr. Neal.
Thank you, President Brown. The reporter, the treasurer, is in the hands of each board member, has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. We will now have the reporter, the student representatives, Randy Lane and Majabin Tepender. Welcome, ladies.
Hello. The schools of report are Garrettford Elementary School, Upper Darby High School, and Westbrook Park Elementary School. Garrettford has been adjusting to the new year. However, they would like to express the pride they feel to be in a school district that supports their staff, students, and community members. Last week, district coaches, reading specialists, MTSS tutors, lead teachers, and even district supervisors assisted with class coverages as needed. January at Garrettford always includes a third-grade family fun night that is run by their PE teacher, Mr. Caldwell. It is an awesome night for the whole family. They have decided to postpone the event but are looking forward to rescheduling later in the school year. Mr. Bridges could not be more proud to work for such a great organization. The Upper Darby High School has been working collaboratively to ensure that the students' return to school is safe and successful. The entire staff has been pulling together throughout the pandemic to ensure that students who want to attend school in person are able to, even when teachers are out sick. During the month of January, there are many significant changes and events occurring at the high school. Finals are quickly approaching and a new semester is to follow. Staff and students have been working hard to get to this part of the school year when their hard work has set them up for success. They will definitely finish the semester strong. Winter formal for the seniors and juniors is scheduled for January 29, 2022. Decorating and planning have already commenced. For Westbrook Park, it has been a tough start to 2022 for Westbrook Park Elementary School. The security guard, Officer John Burke, was senior, passed away suddenly earlier this week. Officer Burke was the security officer at Westbrook Park for the past few years and worked for the Upper Darby School District for over eight years. He worked at Beverly Hills Middle School, Juxell Hill Middle School, and Upper Darby High School. He also worked as a Clifton Heights police officer and was a proud graduate of Upper Darby High School. Officer Burke was a constant presence at Westbrook Park and was always willing to help a student, staff member, or family in need. Westbrook Park Elementary School held a moment of silence for Officer Burke and his family. Officer Burke will be sorely missed by the entire Westbrook Park Elementary School community. We too send our condolences to his family and the school community. This ends our report for this month. Thank you for allowing us to share our thoughts with you tonight.
Thank you both. You always do, you both always do a great job. We look forward to your reports. Thank you very much. The budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public, and I recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. Next, we'll have the superintendent's report by Dr. Dan McGary.
Thank you, Board President Brown. Happy New Year, everybody. Board President Brown, members of the board, administration, teachers, staff, students, parents, and members of the community of the Upper Darby School District, good evening. I also want to say, to Ms. Murphy, congratulations. But with all of your education, it doesn't stop. We'll be reaching out to you and setting up your professional development as a new board member. So stay tuned. There's some more hours of stuff to go through. I think you have a good background, so it won't be too overwhelming. But look forward to spending time with you, with our administrators, and letting you know the day-to-day operations of the district and how things work out. So congratulations to you, and we'll be in touch for more homework. Thank you to the kindergarten center and Dean Williams. Dean, it is amazing how much time flies and for taking on the leadership. It's a wonderful presentation that you put on and what you do every single day and for sharing the work and leading us in the pledge this evening and for helping us celebrate 25, the 25th anniversary of the kindergarten center. Jason Taylor and Mrs. Buford, thank you for putting the video together. We had a little, couple hiccups here, but I think we have to check that bulb, Jay, in that, in that projector so it doesn't happen next month. Board President Brown, members of the Board of School Directors, this time last year, I provided the board with a fairly lengthy report as we were attempting to open our schools for in-person instruction. We are now in our 22nd month, 22nd month of navigating COVID-19, and it continues to be just as challenging now as it was when I provided to you, my report to you this time last year. This year, however, I will keep my comments this evening as brief as possible and focus on recognizing the accomplishments of some of our rural athletes and students that are with us this evening, a reminder that we have begun to develop our 2023 budget, updates to our health and safety plan, and thanking our Board of School Directors for their countless hours of volunteerism and dedication to the Upper Darby School District. Every Friday, Dr. Manfree, Principal Simone, and High School Athletic Director Gretchen Camiso and I meet to review athletic updates and help prepare for pandemic-related guidance and changes we need to consider as we support our student athletes. I want to take a moment to thank Principal Simone, Ms. Camiso, our assistant athletic directors, coaches, our head of transportation, Forrest Tarver and Marvin Lee, Joan McGillvery, Tim Leaf, Dave Olson, our custodian here at the high school, and the assistant principals at Upper Darby High School for supporting our student athletes throughout this very difficult time. It has not been easy over the last two years. All of you have made it a point to continue to be creative in recognizing our senior athletes and have consistently advocated for their opportunities to continue to compete. I would argue that the amount of coordination and effort that goes into the day-to-day operations of Upper Darby High School is on par with running an entire district in another community. I mention all of this because COVID-19 has made all of this even more difficult to manage. But all of you have stepped up for our kids, and I appreciate that you've done that. The result of this support shows up in the following list of Upper Darby High School Royals, who have been recognized as either a scholar athlete, all Delco, or all Central League. And so if there are student athletes that are with us tonight, after I call your name and we're all said and done, we can come up with your principal and take a picture with some board members. That would be great. Pennsylvania Sports Hall of Fame, Delco Chapter Fall Sports Scholar Athlete for Girls Soccer, Moira Pino. Congratulations, Moira. Football, all Delco First Team, Julian LaVenture, defensive line. All Delco Second Team, Covenant Horace, defensive back. Also, all Delco Second Team, Montez Ellis, running back. And I would argue later on, you'll hear his name for another position. Montez plays running back, defensive back, kick returner, and quarterback. And I think he could have made all Delco and Central and all those positions. I would argue, having gone to the games. So congratulations, Montez. First Team All Central League, Julian LaVenture, defensive line. So to be clear, Julian is, is making all Delco and he's also making all Central. And he'll make it for both offense and defense. That's just how talented of an athlete Julian is. Second Team All Central League Football, Henry Davis, center. No, I got Covenant Horace, defensive back, first team all Central, after Julian. Oh, so I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm getting there. We'll get there. Thanks, Dave. Appreciate it. Second Team All Central, like I said, Julian did for first team all Delco for offense and defensive line. And now he's going to be recognized all Central for offensive line, Julian LaVenture. And then Henry, Henry Davis, center. And then Covenant Horace, defensive back, first team all Central. We also have several athletes on the football team that were honorable mention all Central League. Khalil McLaughlin, defensive back, Dorsey Schultz, defensive line, Jihad Cave, defensive back. Again, Montez Ellis, as I said earlier, was also now honorable mention for quarterback. Siddiq Anderson Frick, running back, and Dante Shaw, defensive back, who also played quarterback and running back and wide receiver at times for the offense. So congratulations to all those honorable mentions. Girls Second Team All Central, Aleah Jones and Moira Pino. We also have Ms. Aubrey Patterson, girls soccer honorable mention all Central League as a ninth grader. Congratulations. Boys Soccer, Second Team All Central, Terrence Doe. Boys Soccer Honorable Mention All Central League, Moussa Donzo and Ryan Silves. Tennis Honorable Mention All Central League, Leah Halbin. And Volleyball Honorable Mention All Central League, Janaya Wofford. Good job. So any of you that are here can come on up and get a, get a picture. That would be great.
Congratulations.
As a district, we are always looking for ways to recognize the wonderful contributions of our staff. But we also seek out ways to honor our students. Once again, thank you to Dr. Manfree, Principal Simone, Athletic Director Camiso, Dave Olson, and our coaches for supporting our student athletes. Thank you to our Royal Athletes for your drive, character, and success. As we begin the new calendar year, we have already started to plan for the 2223 budget. Prior to winter break, the Board of School Directors voted on an accelerated opt-out resolution not to exceed our Act 1 adjusted index. I hope everyone has been following the fair funding trial. I've linked some information here in my communication over the past month. While we continue to advocate for a more fair and equitable funding of our public schools, we must also remain mindful of the burden increased taxes have on this community. Our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Craig Rogers, and I have already been meeting to go over our preliminary information for the upcoming budget process that will include staffing and facilities updates and needs. Mr. Rogers will also be holding department meetings in order to refine specific requests as we develop a balanced budget. We will present more information to the board and the public during upcoming Finance and Operations Committee meetings and budget meetings. This time a year ago, we were attempting to reopen our schools for in-person instruction. And here we are now, some 22 months later, and we are still embroiled in ever-changing medical guidance over a virus that continues to stress our educational system. We didn't anticipate and plan for any potential setbacks regarding the virus as we entered this school year. So we have kept in place isolation rooms in our schools and optimized all available space for lunch, keeping students facing in one direction with at least three feet of social distance. In July of 2021, and I appreciate, Ms. Murphy, that you recognize this in your comments this evening, we also provided the board and the public with a review of five different instructional models for the 2122 school year. I am happy to report that the support of the board, recommendations of the administration, and preparation with staff has provided us with a lot of flexibility this year. We are able to offer our students either asynchronous, synchronous, or in-person instruction. While we believe in-person instruction is best for our students, we also want to work with our students and families to meet their needs. We have also been able to offer staff synchronous opportunities to continue to work from home when they are managing or dealing with a COVID-related, for COVID-related reason. Last week and over the weekend, I provided the public with an updated guidance from the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia Policy Lab. We've started to implement this new guidance and we will continue to keep our focus on keeping schools open for in-person instruction. As we've stated since the beginning of this pandemic, there may be times when we must close a school, a classroom, for COVID-related reasons. Our ability to keep our schools open will really continue to require patience and support from our families, students, and staff. But I wanted to say to the board and to the public, thank you for continuing to work with us and support us during this very difficult time. And before closing this evening, I wanted to recognize the Board of School Directors for all of their support and dedication to the Upper Darby School District. Our Board of School Directors gives countless hours of volunteer time supporting the students, staff, and overall community. The elected members of this board are typically challenged with policy debates and balancing budgets, both of which often require a lot of time and energy. Imagine that this volunteer position has required you to navigate a pandemic in a school district that is underfunded by over $20 million a year. We are fortunate to have leaders on this board who have stepped up to meet each new challenge. This evening, we wanted to say thank you for all of your engagement and for pushing us to consider all options and perspectives. Dr. Counsel, Mr. Marshall Akk, and I have recently read a book for the Center for Study Councils, also associated with the Penn Graduate School of Education. And the book is the title, "The Catalyst: How to Change Anyone's Mind." While this is certainly going to require you to take up even more of your personal time and your volunteer position, we hope to use this book as a professional development resource to continue to guide us in our decision-making and to keep the thoughts and perspectives of opposing viewpoints in mind as we move forward. The past 22 months have been exhausting, but they have also been more manageable with your support. In some other communities throughout this pandemic, school board meetings were far from respectful. I believe your guidance, engagement, and participation in home and school association meetings across the district, informational sessions with the public, and your personal review of information has maintained a professional decorum during our meetings when presenting and discussing information. I also wanted to let you know that the members of UDASA and the principals, administrators here in the district wanted to provide you a gift, and it's a plant, as a thank you for your leadership and support during the school year. Board President Brown and members of the Board of School Directors, thank you again for the opportunity to lead the school district and to work with such a dedicated administration, staff, and without question, our talented students. This concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McGary, for those, for that informative report and those heartfelt sentiments. We truly appreciate it.
I do want to let you know that the book report will be due next Friday. Single-spaced, 11.5. Arial type, too. That's our district brand.
All right. We will now have an update on the December 21, 2021 Education and People's Services Committee report. So Mr. Neal will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found in board docs.
Thank you, President Brown. December 21, we held a Education and People's Services Committee. There were three agenda items. The first agenda item was a board action required item, which was the 222223 district calendar. Ms. Christine Kelly reviewed the proposed district one-page calendar for the next school year. This item will require board action this evening. Okay, the second is an informational agenda item, the Keystone Exams Winter Administration Window. Ms. Christine Kelly once again presented the annual Winter Keystone Assessment Window testing requirements and information for parents and guardians. The agenda number three was board action required, the update on the district's health and safety plan. This is where Mr. Ed Marshall Akk presented an update to the district's health and safety plan. The presentation included information on the current positivity rates, vaccination status, and recommendations to update the health and safety plan. This item will require board action this evening. There was one comment. It was on item number three regarding masking requirements. And that concludes my summary of the... regarding masking requirements, and that concludes my summary of the committee.
Thank you very much, Director Neal. Director Neal and Director Williams are now the co-chairs of the Education and People's Services Committee, but I wanted to just acknowledge and recognize Director Mitchell for doing such a good job with the Education and People's Services Committee up to this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now have an update on the December 21st, 2021 Finance and Operations Committee, and Dr. War Savage is now the co-chair along with me for this committee. So, Dr. War Savage, would you like to read the summary, sir?
I was going to say, if you want to keep calling me doctor, I wouldn't mind that.
Did I say doctor? Director. Did I say doctor? Sorry.
Thank you, President Brown. As President Brown just mentioned, we did have a Finance and Operations Committee meeting here in this room Tuesday, December 21st. We went over three items, one of which will require Board Action this evening. First item on the agenda summary is Vendor Fair Update. District Administration provided an update on the upcoming vendor fair tentatively scheduled on February 21st, 2022. The intent of the vendor fair is to inform new and existing vendors of the upcoming capital projects and to encourage MWBE and LGBTQ+ vendors to participate in the district's procurement process. The second item on the agenda summary is Fiscally Responsible Fact-Finding, and it was informational. District Administration discussed procedures to evaluate potential financial savings associated with the non-instructional district services we provide. More specifically, District Administration discussed their future plans to issue a request for a proposal or an RFP for transportation and daycare services. The intent of the RFP is to explore the potential financial savings associated with each service. The district will bring the results of this fact-finding back to the board and public prior to making any decisions. The third item, and that is the one that requires Board Action, is Policy 006. That has to do with meetings. I believe that will be covered later, if I'm not mistaken. And we did have two public comments, and again, I'd like to refer to President Brown's comments in that all items of this agenda summary can be found on Board Docs.
Thank you, Derek. Thank you very much, Director War Savage. Okay, now we have the Instruction and Curriculum Report. Director Neal, can you read that one?
The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member. It has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption. Second?
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstained and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Okay, now we have the Personnel Report by Director Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. Before we consider this report, I'd like to take a moment of silence for two staff members who were recently deceased, Mr. John Burke, an hourly public safety officer, and John Falls, a bus driver. Thank you. The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second?
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
Yes, I do.
Sure, yes.
I wanted to congratulate our two retirees, and we wish you a healthy and safe retirement. We have a number of resignations tonight, but we also have some new professional appointments coming into the Upper Darby School District family, and we'd like to welcome you to the school district community. I'd also like to acknowledge those staff persons tonight who are going from temporary professional status to permanent professional status. Congratulations, and we look forward to a long relationship with you. Just as an acknowledgement of our staff also, who has been battling COVID-19 along with the board and the administration, I just wanted to acknowledge the staff for their heroic efforts, really, to keep schools open this year. People who have filled in, done things above and beyond their comfort zone, and really came, you know, and continue to serve this community so well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. Are there any other comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstained and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The Policy Report, please. Director Des Noers.
Thank you, President Brown. There are, let me pull it up. There are three policies up for a first reading tonight, and because this is a first reading, no vote is required. They will be considered again at the January committee meeting and go for a second reading and adoption at the February board meeting. The three policies are Policy 610, Purchases Subject to Bid Quotation, Policy 611, Purchases Budgeted, and Policy 626, Federal Fiscal Compliance. In these policies, the updates are simply adjusting the minimum dollar amounts, and those dollar amounts are being updated per statutory changes. So, thank you very much. Should I go right into the Policy Report second reading?
Yes, please. Thank you, sir.
Okay, one moment. So, the Policy Report second reading is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second?
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
I have a comment.
Yes, please.
The policy undergoing a second reading for adoption tonight is Policy 006, Meetings, and there's just a minor change to this, and the change is a minor update to language being made because recently finalized updates included conflicting language. The clarification involves specifying that preliminary versions of meeting agendas will be provided to school directors at least three days prior to meetings, while final agendas will be provided to school directors at least one day prior to meetings. Thank you. That concludes my comment.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from board members? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstained and state your name for the record. The motion carries. All right, the Facilities Report.
The Facilities-
Vice President Fields.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report, and the Donation Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second?
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstained and state your name for the record. The motion carries. All right, the Finance and Budget Report. Dr. Hague.
Thank you, President Brown. The Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second?
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you, Ms. Buford. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye opposed and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstained and state your name for the record. The motion carries. And now we'll come to our collateral assignment reports. We have some new people in place for different positions. So we'll start with the Delaware County Community College, and that is now Vice President Fields.
Thank you very much. I'm newly appointed, so I don't have a report right now.
Okay, you didn't do your homework. It's okay.
Yesterday.
We'll expect something next time. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Director Mitchell.
Thank you, President Brown. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board met last Wednesday, January 5th. We approved, and I believe that you all received, the connection from Dr. McGary, approval to support the professional development opportunities for district and IU staff in several districts. We approved opportunities to support educational municipal and community partners and families. We approved some grants, contracts, leases, appointments, and services, and we approved to enhance student learning and work experience for future educators. The next meeting of the IU Board is tomorrow night, so I get the pleasure of going back to the IU again tomorrow for their committee meeting. If you're interested, the meetings are open to the public, and they meet on the first and second Wednesday of the month at 7:00 PM.
Is there a virtual option to attend the IU meeting?
There is no virtual option.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that report. Next is the Legislative Council Meeting, and that meeting is always the Wednesday after this meeting, but I do have some notes from the December 1. John Callahan, who's the Chief Advocacy Officer from PSBA, this was on December 8. He did provide an update on the legislative activity in Harrisburg and advocacy work being done by PSBA. House Bill 1254, which is a voucher bill, was halted in grassroots efforts by board members. Was partially responsible for that. SR 172 was a resolution calling on Congress to assist with the school bus driver shortage. Governor Wolf did sign this resolution. House Bill 416, a bill that will require seizure training, was amended from being a mandate to being optional due to efforts by PSBA. So those are the main ones that they covered in that meeting, and again, that meeting, the next one will take place tomorrow morning at 7:30. I will attend that, and I'll provide, you know, a report on that at our next meeting. Okay? Mendenhall Tyson Scholarship, Dr. Hague.
We are meeting in February to discuss allocations and students. So I should have more to say next time.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Home and School, Director War Savage.
Thank you, President Brown. I do not have a report at this time.
Okay, and Dr. McGary, sorry to, those meetings are resuming. I know you did your tour around the district at home and school meetings. Is there, there's one coming up, right? I think I saw one pop on my calendar later this week. Is that correct?
There is a high school home and school meeting coming up, but we don't have, we have not reestablished the second wave of my tour. That will happen in the spring. We will be setting up a district home and school meeting. I'll be passing that out to everybody. But we have finished the first fall tour, and the spring tour will begin sometime soon, but I'll let you know when it's coming up. April.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. PSBA, I covered some of that, you know, what happened at the legislative meeting with PSBA. I don't have any other updates on PSBA right now, other than the fact that there's required training for school board directors that was re-elected to the school board, and I think we all satisfied that requirement. I did one in December, and I think my colleagues did it in January, right? Everyone was taken care of. Some did it virtually. I'm sorry? Okay, so we'll all have that pretty much taken care of soon, and I think Deborah and Don did theirs. Oh, Neil. Sorry, Neil. Neil, Neil. Sorry, Neil. You went to an in-person one, correct? Okay, okay, great, great. Sounds good. All right. Policy Liaisons, anything to add? Director Des Noers?
Just that two significant efforts on policy that the board will be under, that the board has expressed interest in undertaking this spring is work on the field trip policy, which I believe is Policy 121. There is a field trip committee that has been formed and will be meeting. There'll be at least a couple of board members on that, and something we recently discussed last week in our policy liaison group was some type of policy for around social media use by board members. The shape of that discussion is yet to be, you know, it's, we just had a very initial discussion and have to figure out how we want to proceed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Communications, that should be Dr. Hague and Director Mitchell. So any update for that?
Just that we're working on the update for January. We're trying to emphasize some of the highlights from the meeting so that community members can stay engaged, and of course, anyone who's not receiving those updates can sign up for them by going to the district website and then the School Board tab, and there's information about how to sign up.
Thank you, Directors Hague and Director Mitchell, for those reports. They're very informative, and I highly suggest everyone subscribe and make sure you read those. Old business, is there any old business from board members? Director War Savage.
Just one quick note, actually about the 25th anniversary presentation of the Kindergarten Center. My sister Allison was actually a part of that class, and she played a part in that quilt, and my mom has been nagging me for the longest time to get a picture of that quilt at some point, so I will be in touch. And the other thing about that video that actually got me tearing up was the fact that I got to see the two kindergarten teachers that welcomed my family when I came into the district in 1991. That was Mrs. Palladino and Miss Spaniak. They were AM PM kindergarten teachers at Aron Mink Elementary, and to see them both still standing there, along with so many other people who emulate that same example of being here so long, because they love it, I'm just so, so proud to be a son of Upper Darby School District, so that's it.
Thank you for that old business. Thank you. Any other old business from school board directors? Okay. We'll move along to, is there any new business from board members? Director Neal?
Thank you, President Brown. My new business is actually, it's about the Kindergarten Center. I'm delighted here's 25 years, but I also feel dejected about the fact that it's been 25 years that these kindergarten students have not been in their neighborhood elementary school, and I feel that our school board, our vision, has been to get our kindergarten back into our one-to-five schools, making them K-5 schools. And I think as we go through our facilities projects, I, you know, we need to go big or go home. And so with, in regards to the Cardington Field Project, I know we were discussing three floors, you know, it's possible to do four floors, you know, and look at all different possibilities. So we can look down the line 20, 25 years from now, where if a Catholic school closes and all of a sudden now neighborhood schools are becoming even more overcrowded, I want to have the foresight before those issues arise. So I just think the school board, we need to recommit ourselves to that, to that vision of placing our kindergarten students back into their neighborhood schools, and so we're not busing. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other new business from board members? Okay. Hearing none. We are now at the time for the public hearing. We will call up Darby residents who signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in, followed by emailed and phoned comments. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, and present your comments in the three-minute time limit. In accordance with Policy 903, the time allotted for general comments, both in-person and submitted comments, will not exceed one hour. So no one signed in to speak in the room, so I'll ask Ms. Buford about online.
Yes, sir. We do have one comment. This comment is from Seven Jolosian, located at 1144 Myrtlewood Avenue in Haver Town. This comment was received on the 11th at 7:20 PM via email, and it is a general comment. The comment reads, "Good evening, school board members. I again request that you immediately remove the mask mandate and make UDSD face cover- I again request that you immediately remove the mask mandate and make U D S D face coverings optional. The data points of target incidence rates and positivity rates must be removed and should not be used as conditional measures to enforce masking of our healthy children. Undoubtedly, masking has many adverse effects from psychological, academic, and social deterioration with potential negative impacts on cognitive development. This brings to light the 700-pound elephant in the room, and that is the underlying factors attributed to COVID deaths, factors such as juvenile diabetes, hypertension, heart disease. These comorbidities with the CDC now, which the CDC now admits that 75% of people who died had at least four comorbidities. These underlying medical issues, along with mental illness, suicide, and gun violence, will kill our children at a faster rate than COVID ever will. It is unnecessary, unhealthy, and inhumane to mask a healthy child for six-plus hours. Why is it so difficult for this board to comprehend this? It is a parent's right to perform their own risk assessment, considering physical, mental, and psychological risks and benefits for their children when it comes to all medical decisions, including masking. Dr. McGary, in response to your comments from my public comments from December's committee meeting, I find it hard to believe that you yourself are following the quote-unquote "rules of engagement." Did you apply this principle to the students who damage school property and commit criminal acts, but then you allow these rotten apples to return to school? Have you yourself followed the rules of engagement and applied the code of student conduct to these incidents? The district is made into a mockery when the quote-unquote "lockdown, lock-in, lock-out" posts hit social media. Regardless of all the building renderings you display and specs you choose, you chose, surrounding districts know they are coming to quote-unquote "upper dumps, upper druggie." Your reply of quote-unquote "overpopulation," poor excuse. You and I both know the district has been busting at the seams since we attended in the late 1990s. It also did not sit well with me that you replied that the topic of COVID masks, for some reason, quote-unquote, had been politicized. I kindly ask you to refrain from this mindset. Please do not look at this as red or blue. Please look at it as red, white, and blue. Watching the live stream, I see you all recite the Pledge of Allegiance, and I am total disgust hearing board members repeat quote-unquote "with liberty and justice for all." How dare you take your pledge and not uphold it? If you need to be reminded, let me remind you, Pennsylvania General Assembly legislated public school code.
That's the time limit for that comment, so thank you, Ms. Buford. Are there any other comments?
There are no more comments.
Okay.
I just want to state that the comment was received electronically, and it will be made part of the entire record when the minutes are put together. So although we didn't read the entire comment in the three-minute allotment, it will be included in the record.
Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you for your patience. Have a good night, everyone.